I'd like to call the order of the committee, the whole, for February 9th, 2021 at 5:21 PM. Roll call.
Alderman Madden.
Here.
Alderman Kabaki is not here. Alderman Engelhardt.
Here.
Alderman Kapusta.
Here.
Alderman Terrence.
Here.
Alderman Hamel.
Here.
Alderman Wolfe.
Here.
And Mayor Pitfalski is here. We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Statement of public notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor of the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Approval of minutes from November 10th, 2020?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing done. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Minutes are approved. New business, Park Arthur Baseball Field Development. So, if you remember a couple, probably a couple of months, maybe about a month ago, I came forward. We are, as part of our capital budget this year, we are redoing the three smaller diamonds at Park Arthur due to, I guess, lack of a better term, inferior construction. One of the things that we had looked at and I had talked to you about was looking at an option to provide field to put, to upgrade those fields from a traditional grass infield to turfing them with AstroTurf. If we all, if, most of you will remember, two years ago, almost to the date, this, maybe not quite to the date, but about two years ago, the room was pretty filled with people, kind of irate from the baseball organizations, about the cost of field prepping. I think at that time, the cost had come in that was going to be passed along to them, where it's about $165 a game. And, you know, I understand we had to move forward with it because it was really the only option we had at the time, but I think at the time, the council had charged mayor at the time, and I think yourselves as a whole, let's try to find a better way to make baseball more affordable in this area. So, we've been looking at a number of things. One of the things I had tried.
I don't know how to respond to that.
My watch is talking to me. One of the things that I had been working on with the group since probably May-ish was trying to get them to, like, join, essentially form a organization, a parent organization for all the teams, and maybe do a leaseback where they can control the field prep themselves. Well, we talked about it for months. They came to the table, but ultimately decided that's not something they were interested in doing. Lot of logistics involved and politics and everything else, and it just ultimately wasn't a direction we wanted to go. So this turf thing comes up. Ryan, I think, was the first one to kind of look at it, and Scott brought it forward, and Tammy. If we, if we were to turf the fields, it gets rid of the prep cost, essentially. They're, it's carpeting. Hybrid carpeting. So, originally, we had talked about, it would be, we were guessing about $100,000 to do the upgrade. We actually did get more, and then at that time, we were going to talk about to have the baseball organizations pay for that. We would front the money, and they'd pay it back over 10 years. We did get some harder numbers in. The numbers are a little bit higher than we expected. About, I think they came in at like $135. But then, a number of things we were looking at, and instead of having them pay for it upfront, or us pay for it upfront and them pay us back, Tammy's been putting together, and I'm going to have these guys talk in a minute, about doing a turf charge to them per game. Be substantially cheaper. We were looking at, like, between $100 and $125 a day for them to use it for games. So if they have a game on Wednesday night, they're going to stack three, four games on there. They would pay that one fee, and that would be their, their cost for the game versus, you know, the $175 that they would be paying on a traditional field. So, we, we think, if we do this right, and like I said, we'll get into the details. There's some numbers in your, in your packet right there. Over 10 years, we can not only just pay for the turf, we could actually pay back the cost of the, the whole field. We've got $650,000 we have budgeted for the field plus the turf. If you look at the numbers that are in there, they're, over a 10-year period, she's got three different things. And these are very conservative numbers. You know, anywhere from $660 to $900,000 in revenue that we could get over 10 years on these. So, I'm not sure. Who, who would like to start?
Left to right. So, when we started looking at this idea and just everyone, field prep is, just to let you know, it's probably coming next in February, we had two people bid on that contract. One was $175, the other one was $300. It is only going up. I, I mean, it is going up without a doubt. We can't stop it from going up. This is definitely one-way. Hundred bucks, 125, that's it. You know, they can stack their games, you know, as many as they can. It's the same rules. We don't change any, they still, priorities are the same as they would have normally. That, that's one of the key things that we would be doing through this whole process. This also, this also accounts for us, just for additional costs, just to let everyone know. Every year, it's 3,000, and then in two years, it's 9,000. Why? 3,000, we have to get new rubber pellets. I don't know if, I've been doing, we've been going everywhere. You have to get rubber pellets, you got to put them in there. Every two years, you cut out rectangles by the batter boxes for the three fields, and you put on Velcro, and you put in brand-new kind of sections, because they get worn down a lot. So that is a cost of 6,000 extra. That's why it's 3,000, 9,000, 3,000, 9,000, 3,000, 9,000. Now, if the weather's really good to us, maybe you can hold off for three years. But that's, that's giving you the capital cost that you would see how we do it for every field every year.
But that's, you have that projected out for?
Yeah, oh yeah, that's, that's, I have it five years, but I, but that.
But the price will probably go up, right?
It, it potentially could, but, but again, we always do inflation, and we'll know. I just did it real quick numbers, you know, you know what I mean? Three to nine, three to nine. By the way, I always bump a little bit in there, so it's probably like $2,500, but I put 3,000 to cover. And we can adjust it. It's a five-year capital, so every year, we can kind of go look at it, what our prices are. The other thing, too, these life spans, it's about eight to 12 years for the whole field, just to let you know. And then you have to get all the fields all the way over. That is included in this. It's a big cost to redo these fields after about 10 years.
You're re-carpeting them.
Yeah, we're re-carpeting.
But you're, but you're saving 50 bucks a game, or a day for games?
Yes.
So, so one of the things you'll see in here is, there's, there's this cost analysis that Tammy did. We're trying to keep the cost low for our home teams, but this is going to be the only facility like it between The Rock and Madison. So the potential for outside teams to be using this for tournaments and filling in the gaps, and to be able to charge them a premium, which would still be cheaper than the commercial places, and that's where, that's where we're going to be paying for this.
And, and the other thing, too, is these fields now will be good April 1st to October 31st. You, you, you know, there's, there's not going to be like, hey, we can't play on it now. I mean, that's, that's the, the beauty of the turf with everything. Yep.
On the, on the bigger field, the pitchers mound, is that going to be turf or is that going to be clay and dirt? Because the pitchers mound.
We're not, we're not doing four. We're just doing the one, two, three.
Oh, one, two, three, okay.
Just one, two, three. Just, just everything. Now.
What about the batter boxes on one, two, three? Because those are.
They're, they're all turf. Everything's going to be turf.
The batter box will be turf as well?
This is where you cut it out, like, that's where the heavy usage is, and you cut it out. It's, it's pretty cool stuff. The bases, they just put in the bases, you stab it, you tap it down, you can adjust them. This also includes this price, too, is we need a turf manager. This is a seasonal person. You don't want these things to get damaged. We want to make sure people, they're, they're respecting the turf as much out there. It's, it's all included in the price.
How do you get a turf manager? I mean, it's just a part-time thing?
It's a season, it's a seasonal perks guy.
Yeah, just.
Like a college student or something?
Yeah. Yep, that, we've included that in the price.
Someone that's going into that type of field or something?
Could be, could be just like our park rangers who takes pride in our facilities.
I, I do have another quick question while we're going here. That three and 6,000, or three and 9,000, that's not included in the top brackets, is that?
I included that all the way for, like, taking it out for the return.
It's in our, it's in our expenses, yes.
It's in our expenses.
I see, but it says capital, but that's, that's, is that in group, is it under the groups? That's not included in that part?
No, 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 no. That would be like, when we start getting the funds back.
But I'm just saying, because you show the revenues here, but that doesn't include the, I, I.
Well, that'd be an expense, not a.
That would be an expense line. That would be an expense line. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. No, I, we were trying to do as much expense as turf manager, the three to, three and nine back and forth, the ultimate cost of redoing these, like, fields of carpet every 10 years. The other cost-saving, too, besides the usage, they used to pay a fee for lights, a fee for just the field use, and that all goes away. We just charge them the 100, the 125 for it. And the additional thing to do is, once these fields are turf, we are more than willing to go work with them and redo stuff of like, hey, Warriors still play on Kirth or Bloom, let's look at redoing a field prep that might be a little bit more economic for you on those fields as well.
There, there's, there are people in the community, the gentleman who does the fields at the high school has a side business. He's much more economical than our present vendor, but he can't handle the size that we have. But he could handle, like, just doing Kirth.
A small one.
Yeah, so that would be the advantage also of, by turfing this, because it takes away that, the, the size, the scalability of what we have right now is so big that if all we have left are some smaller uses, well, that's something that this guy could do. So then he could bid on those projects. He can't bid on it as it is now.
And then, these costs also would, I, I, let me put my glasses on. So say it's 100, we got Mesquite go teams, $100. Would you say that? That, that'll also include the use of the pavilion?
If they're having a tournament, like, and they're using a whole complex.
Okay, but just for regular games?
Tournament, but they don't use the shelters for their.
They don't?
No.
Okay.
They don't sell concessions anymore. They don't have volunteers to do it.
Terrence want to watch the game?
Only if they do it, they've been setting up underneath the little gazebo. They just pull a cooler up with water and Gatorade, and that's all they're selling. They're not using that large concession area.
But for the tournaments, it'll be, it'll be included.
For Mesquite go teams, but any outside teams would have to pay that additional shelter rental cost.
Couple things. So the city of Whitewater actually has a turf field. It's like nested in their little, because we've played tournaments there, and it's always packed. It's hard to get on there. Big fan of, of what we're looking at. I would love to have seen kind of the, sort of that comparison to say, hey, non-turf fields cost money. They're still sort of the, we have to do dirt work. I realize we're looking at, hey, here's the, the cost of turf, here's that revenue. To not do this is still a cost, right? So the side of me that says, hey, we're cost-justifying to make it net-neutral, if we choose not to do turf, there's still going to be a pretty sizable expense on that field. So, I, I guess, on the pro side, understanding that it's not turf or no expense, it's the turf plan or the dirt plan, which is still going to cost us, what was that estimate?
650.
650.
Yeah, 650, right. So we're still, I mean, we're not getting, this isn't a spend money or don't spend money. It's where.
Yeah, it's exact, like, let's say you guys don't do turf. We're, we're still going to fix those fields, one, two, and three.
And the dirt cost.
Yeah, but that, that bill is 600.
Really, what we're looking at is $135,000 frontage to start with now.
For 10 years.
For 10 years, or, or actually less, depending, I mean, if we're looking at 135,000, and the low projection here is annual revenue of 65.9, you know, you know, so there's, there's that to look at. The other thing it does is, there's a potential for using the excess revenue to improve our perks without using levy dollars or taxpayer, other, other funding sources. That, you know, it kind of makes them a, you know, self, more self-sustaining, you know, not, I don't want to use the word self-sustaining, because that gets to be dangerous when we put those demands out there, but it does help supplement the cost of our perks, which I see as a win-win, especially when you look at the revenue on this, where the majority of all these lines, the biggest number out there, are outside groups. It's kind of like a hotel tax.
Yeah, the, the fields that have turf are sought after by tournaments, because when you put, like, the New Berlin Magic have a tournament every year, and it's 72 teams per age bracket. It's crazy. And if you get rained on, and that tournament gets rained out, they're refunding 90% of the dollars, and they're losing money, and it's a mess. You can play on turf borderline like a thunderstorm. You, you play through it.
Barring lightning, you can play.
Yeah, and we've done it. It turns into a little bit of like the ball flight everywhere, but, so teams will look for that. The local tournaments that are there, when they see a turf field, they're going to call and say, hey, what's the cost to use your fields? Also knowing then they're not prepping the fields either, which that's a big thing when you're playing eight games in a day on a field, to have to go and rake and re-line and set the field back up again. Takes time. Usually they're paying their little, like, field hands. So it's going to be a, a venue that tournaments will seek, and it will be as full as you let it be. So.
And what's the warranty on the turf after, and installation?
Ryan did, Ryan did a lot of the legwork on this.
Well, that's good, because, the reason I bring it up is because there's a reason why we're redoing these fields right now, and, because they weren't done correctly the first time.
It's eight-year minus the wear areas that we're talking about replacing, so.
That's what they'll replace? Does that include labor?
Yes, that's everything.
That's a good deal, then.
Another, another benefit to any replacements that need to happen with the wear areas, my staff can handle it. As far as replacing those batter's box and wear areas, that's all simple stuff that we can hand, handle, and they're going to train us. If there's anything outside of stuff we don't know already, after the installation is done, so.
As long as we have a warranty on it.
The upkeep, weekly inspection things.
Well, you have a turf manager, so you'll have all, you'll have that in place.
Alderman?
Couple thought questions here. The, the prep is almost totally eliminated with this, this plan?
It is. So the, I don't know if it's in there, the picture of it, but I added, I added this so that we put in the actual fall lines. There's not even any.
Oh, you have the man. That's included in that price?
Yes.
Okay, so the lines are permanent lines until?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the only thing that will have for grass, natural turf, would be between the fall lines to the fence.
They take up the bases and put them down each game, or?
Yeah, the bases, they're like, kind of like teaching them. You put it in, and you step on it.
And it stays, yeah. Non-skid, okay.
And then you have to put markers on the field, like, because then you need to put different lanes with them up. And then the rest of the, the setup bases cost like 525 dollars, and they can some on.
So we want somebody on site with an eye on them.
My other, other point of discussion is, what's the vulnerability for vandalism, since we've had some vandalism problems?
That's another thing. So we currently, on the, the smaller pavilion we put up a couple of years ago, a camera's facing field one, two, and three. It kind of just gives you like a snapshot. I plan on adding a camera on one of the fall poles, giving us overhead look of each area. Most field complexes are locked, turf complexes are locked. This is a different scenario, but.
So the cameras are hooked up to the, with the other system? Is that part of the police station?
The current ones are.
Okay.
Fine, we got cameras over, but what if somebody come in and did a lot of damage? How, how much money would we be facing to?
Whatever our deductible is.
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay. And insurance costs are covered in, in this plan?
Our gates will be locked, you know, I mean, vehicle-wise, unless they drove through the fence, but yeah.
We're not changing our budget on insurance or something. I don't know which way to ask the question here, but.
Well, insurance, my understanding, and Sharon's not here to answer this, but our insurance rates are based more on experience. Like, if somebody were to come and tear them up, and then we have a claim on it, well, your rates are going to go up because you had a claim. More so than, it's not like a car where, okay, you bought a more expensive car, so your car insurance is going to go up.
The concept sounds good.
Any other questions on this?
So are we going to be talking about low, medium, high costs here?
So, yes. So the, I guess what I'm, what I'm going to ask for, and by the way, Alderman Kabaki did send an email this weekend before he took off to Mexico in the warm weather. Not that I am bitter or anything. That he does support this. He threw out, like, he supports it at the medium thing, and, and I guess I'm not looking for you guys to, the medium, medium tier is fine. If you have a payback time period you want to look at, what I would like you guys not to do to us is say, okay, we're going to charge 125 for the home teams and 225. I, my goal is to make it as affordable as possible for the home teams and maximize the revenue from the external teams. So we may play with these numbers.
Do a hybrid, low and medium.
Yeah, I mean, so I'd rather have a bigger picture from you guys of, let's see if we can, you know, if, if we could do this in 10 years, 12 years, eight years, whatever your number is on that, you know, I'd rather shoot for that and then let staff maybe adjust it. We'll, we'll set a thing for the first year. We'll see how it goes. We can adjust it the second year. But let's treat this more like an enterprise where, you know, we can, we can be more proactive. If you guys set a number on it, for us to change that, it's, it's too hard, because we always have to come back for all that.
No, but I, I am in favor of the, the low and then the medium for visiting. And, and it's because we have to add a manager in. I mean, although we can expense that, we still, it's still costing us. We're pulling it from somewhere. So, you know, if we have a premium product to offer for out-of-area people, we should get rewarded for that.
I agree.
Like, it's just like when we sold the liquor license to Hills Corners, you know. We should get something for it more than nothing, you know, so.
No, and I'm, there's a huge benefit to the community, right? I know I'm usually pretty frugal, but it's a park, right? I'm not going to look at the, the playground and say, hey, how do we get our money back on the playground? Like, okay, no. There's a lot of community organizations here in Mesquite go that utilize the fields. This is a huge benefit for them. Giving them a cost benefit, giving them some preferential treatment for that. To me, that's the focus, and I'm okay not necessarily looking at it and saying, hey, you got to get all the money back in eight years, right? Like, there is some opportunity to really generate revenue, but I see this as a, a win, even if we don't get our money back in 10 years, because of what it can mean for the community and what these organizations are now staying here, which has some benefit to businesses. And then you got tournaments coming to town. There's a lot of stuff that goes with that, so.
Well, we also did take a, a big chance building that park. It, it caused a lot of extra for the pavilion, which will be used as well. And, you know, I don't, I don't mind getting a little premium from out of the area. Like I said, if we keep it more affordable for the locals, they helped with the initial lights and things like that. I mean, they're, you know, that's what it's about. So, I mean, like I said, we're at this point because we had to redo everything, and people have been using it before and benefiting from it, and now it's going to be even better. So, if we can, if we can get a little extra win out of it, I think we should do that.
This will be a draw for the area. I mean, it's, it's, it's going to be good for the community. It's going to be good for the businesses around there. You know, it, it's one, it's, for now, we're one of, we're, like I said, we're between The Rock and Madison. We're it, you know.
That's amazing.
Whitewater's south of there, they, you know, they got one there. I think the next, the next one in the Madison area is either Sun Prairie or DeForest.
DeForest is, they call it a cold relief setup, but only two of those are turf.
That's Madison.
The mayor, do we know, are these, the high-end costs, are they comparable to The Rock?
Yeah.
They are?
And the numbers that are in the column, like the estimated number of games, the Mesquite go games, the 100%, 75% Mesquite go teams, those are the only knowns. Like, that's what we average every year for games. So, the other numbers are low guesses on our end of what we would have for tournaments and outside users coming in. So here, one might look very close to the low year, just because the word isn't out there. I fully expect by year three, we're sitting here behind.
Yeah, I got friends, I got friends that play at The Rock, and they're always complaining they can't get in. So I would think we'd be pretty busy here.
I honestly think the revenue will be made on practices, rental practice lots for teams who are all over the place, and they get rained out three days in a week, and they need to make it up somewhere. They'll come that way. So we'll make it at games and tournaments, but the actual rents all for practices for outside teams will be a big money earner to cover the cost of.
So touching on that practice comment, the other thing that, there's a benefit for this also, is we still have other baseball diamonds around the community. Like, take Bloom, for example. Baseball fields are in better shape when they're used than when they're not. When they're not used, weeds grow through them. You got to go through and turn, you know, it just, so, one of the things that Tammy's pointed out, and she, I, I believe she's correct on this, is our home teams probably won't be using these for practice. They'll just use this for games, but then they're going to start using these other fields for practices, which will put use on them, which actually keeps them in better shape than not using them. So there's a benefit that way.
Sure. And like, the New Berlin Magic had reached out to us. They're already renting Bloom for a tournament. They would like to use seven fields, so they'd like to be Park Arthur. And that is what will end up happening, is we will have multi, we'll have game probably Park Arthur, four, more, Bloom, and Park Arthur going on at the same time. We will end up, which means I got to go from Bloom, I got to get Hardee's, I got to get to Park Arthur, I got to go to Call Press and go back. So it is going to drive a lot of business to the restaurants and businesses here in the summer.
Yes, sir.
So Rick, you're saying that you want to get back to us with some figures on where you see the numbers crunching out at?
No, what I would like is a target today of, if you have a, you know, eight, 10, 12-year, where you'd like to see a return, yes or no, do you want to go forward with this, and we'll start planning at that point?
Second question, when we start, when are we going to start this, if we approve it?
End of July.
Yeah, it would be July 19.
So no matter what, remember, no matter what, July 19th, we're starting.
We're doing those fields regardless. It's a matter of if we're going to add turf to it or not.
We need to have enough time to get grass growing in those fields, so that plant, 2022 hits, we're ready to go. So that's why we are very told all the teams, July 18th, that Sunday is the last day that you get useless for one, two, and three, and then we are going. It has to get done.
So you may hear some complaints from teams that were cutting it off early this season, but it's better off for us to cut their, cut that like a week or two shorter than normal, versus losing all in next spring. Because if we don't get the, if we don't have the seed in, by the time it starts taking this year, it's going to wait until next spring, and then you're going to lose all spring and part of summer.
And they're, they're still fields. Bloom is still open, Kirth is still open, Bloom, Jensen, Horn.
They're just, they're just losing, they're just losing this complex for two weeks at the end of the summer.
So lastly, what happens in eight years? They said it wears out, you're done. What happens? We have to replace it all, pieces of it, or how does that work?
Yeah, the infrastructure will already be there. You're just taking the top off and putting a new one on.
And our numbers are building a fund to refund, to be able to replenish that.
But you said we should get 10 out of it, right?
If you take, the biggest thing is the crumb rubber that you put in there, the infill is a sanding.
So it might get 12.
If you take, I'd stay ahead of it, the Monday after a long tournament, my staff will be out there going through all the wear areas. If we stay on top of it and take care of the fields.
And we, we have the capital expenses to do that, so as, as we go along, you guys will come back and advise us. My, I, I guess what we probably should do is give an okay right now for, and I would say a 10-year, and like I said, do some type of hybrid, where you keep the locals lower, and, and get a 10-year chart out here, because you already got a five-year chart on the, on the capital expense, so let's just. Keep it five to 10s, and it'll be easy, and then you can come back. If we need to adjust prices, just come back and let us know each year, for whatever reason it is.
We have flexibility with that. If we go for 10 years, we have good flexibility in.
Yeah, that's what I just asked for, is come back and let us know.
No, I think, I, that's exactly what I'm looking for. If you say, you know, our goal is to have a, a payback over 10 years, Tammy can set some numbers, go forward with that. We'll see how it is. After the first year, we may have to make some adjustments. We, up or down, seeing where we're at, you know, and maybe the numbers she, or the, the lower numbers we use, and this thing's, the, the outside teams are better than she projected. We pay it off in, you know, six or eight years, and then we, we start getting revenue for other parts, other parts, other parks or other parts of that park.
Well, we can also escrow some of it, too, to keep this rolling, you know, because the.
Well, and we will, these numbers include doing that already.
Okay, because the locals have put into it already. And the teams are, the people who supported this already, the park for baseball are in a board, on board with all this?
So we, we've been talking with, I've been talking with them since May about all different ways. You know, I kind of went through, when I first started this, of forming this organization, turning the fields over to them, turf, having them pay for the turf. So today, we actually did spring on them of, okay, the numbers came in higher, probably double than what, you know, their annual, annual outlay would have been double, what we were talking about. And we, and I told them, we're coming tonight to, instead of having them pay their annual lump sum fee, to pay a per-game fee, they're still digesting it, but I'm pretty sure they, they'll see the advantage of it. Tammy gave them all the numbers of what their usage was in the past, so they can do the math on it.
Were they, were they going to come up with money to help with this originally, that now they won't have to, right?
Yes. They were going to pay, they were going to pay for the turf upgrade when we based it at $100,000.
I think it's probably a win situation for them, but I think, I think if we go forward with it and, and wait for feedback from them, and bring that to our attention at a meeting, just to make sure they're aboard and, and everything's fine with what they're thinking.
So, where are we in that? So we can start planning?
10 years. I mean, yeah, I could do a 10-year. Like I said, make an advantage for us, and if we have to raise the price of the non-resident, I would suggest doing that to keep it lower for us, and, like I said, get, get them on board and, and get feedback from the, I don't know what teams, what organizations, I don't know if they're going together in one now or not. I don't know what's going on.
They're, they're, they're all different organizations, and they're, they're in flux, quite, quite honestly. They change from year to year in which ones, but we do have priority levels based on, if you're 100% Mesquite go kids, 75% Mesquite go kids, less than that, so they fall into a different tier group on what they'd be paying, and.
But I thought we were going to have a organization that we won't need to do that anymore.
We won't need to, well, not only won't need to do it, they, that's one of the things I'd work into, and they don't want to do that.
They don't, okay. Yeah, just let us know what they think, and, and tell them where we're at, and go from there. I think it's a win situation for them, but maybe they're thinking different, or have something else they want to talk about. I don't know.
I'll bring forward at the next, well, hopefully the next council, I, I got to talk to Sharon if we have to do a budget amendment, or how we have to do this, to at least approve the funding for this part coming forward.